We are overwhelmed with the turnout for this very, very important topic. I'm Bridget Donald Newton, I'm the mayor, and with me tonight are our four council members, Beryl Feinberg, Virginia Anley, Councilmember Palakovich Carr, and Mark Perschela. Also joining us are Councilmember Sidney Katz, Councilmember Mark Elrich, State Senator Cheryl Kagan, Delegate Kumar Barve, Representative Jeff Samuels, Representative Congressman Van Hollen, countless of our police -- senator, I did it, I'm so sorry, wow, I hope you didn't get that on tape. And I even wrote it down. Well, he knows how I feel. I want to thank all our staff for being here tonight. This has been an incredible undertaking, and thank VisArts for giving us the opportunity to hold this here. We actually thought we'd have about 60 or 70 people. So, we are beyond engaged. I also want to give a shout out to -- I just forgot her name. Anyway, Federal Realty. Yeah, it's been a long day. Mary Lineagren is who I wanted to thank. Mary Lineagren from VisArts, who really worked hard setting all this up, and thank you very much for your help today. Federal Realty has agreed to participate in this meeting, and Margie Graff, who's the president and CEO of the Rockville Chamber, is going to give ground rules and some other introductions, but I really just wanted to set the tone tonight. This is an opportunity for all of us. We are all stakeholders in this city. We are all stakeholders in what happens in our downtown, in the town square, in the city center. Some of us were on TCAT many years ago, which was the impetus to the then-mayor and council and Mayor Giamo's here, to build this town square, and so we are all invested in its future success. Whether you are a shopkeeper, a restaurateur, a leaseholder, a taxpayer, a business owner in the city, we're all in this together. And our goal tonight is to have a conversation about how do we be successful for everyone, and that includes everyone. So I just want to thank you all very much for coming. Thank you for your ideas and your creativity tonight. I'd like to introduce and welcome Margie Graff, the new president of the Chamber of Commerce. She comes from Vermont with a lot of great ideas as a small business owner, a Chamber president in Vermont, and now a city resident. So, thank you.
You took my paper. This is a little overwhelming for me to see so many people here, but I am thrilled that you're all here, because we all want the same thing, a thriving Rockville. So, I want to just go over some ground rules, since there are so many people. It's a public discussion, not a debate. The purpose is to hear many points of view and explore many options and solutions. We're going to be taking some notes of some solutions. Our goal is not necessarily to agree, but to gain a deeper understanding of the issues. Everyone is encouraged to participate. Be respectful. One person speaks at a time. Refrain from side conversations. Pay attention to the person speaking. Turn off and silence all cell phones and other devices. People are more likely to contribute if they know they are respected. Listen to other people's points of view. All of us bring information and ideas to contribute. No one or two individuals should dominate a discussion. If you have already voiced your ideas, let others have an opportunity. When you speak, be brief and to the point. You can see how many people there are here. Seek first to understand, not to be understood. Ask questions to seek clarifications when you don't understand the meaning of someone's comments. So, that's the ground rules, and I'm going to now introduce you to Deirdre Johnson. Where are you, Deirdre? From Federal Realty. And thank you so much for participating.
Well, thank all of you so, so much for coming here tonight. My name is Deirdre Johnson, and I'm the Vice President of Asset Management for Federal Realty. And for the last two and a half years, I've been dedicated to Rockville Town Square, and it's something that we've worked very hard on. It's because I'm tall. Okay. We're going to work to do that, and we're so glad that you're out there. So I'm going to do my best to speak loud. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So, I've worked on a lot of shopping centers over a long period of time. Actually started in the shopping center industry when I was 15, and some of you may remember Park Lane Hosiery back in the day. That was a long, long time ago. And at 23, when I graduated from college, I started working for the Rouse Company based out of Columbia, Maryland. And so my life has been shopping centers, it's been community, it's been about people. And I can say that there are very few people like Bridget Newton and Rob Dispirito to pull together a meeting like this for all of us to talk about town square and town center. And I think it brings together the best thinking, the best ideas. It gives us a chance to have a forum in which to give them, but I just hope it doesn't stop here today. But when you talk about the task force, and when you talk about giving me or any one member of our team a call, we want you to do that. A lot of times when you're in a big forum like this, it's hard to have a voice. And for those of us, even me, who may be on the introverted side and feel more comfortable putting their thoughts and ideas in writing, we did set up a website, and Sarah North, our marketing director, has these cards. And we want to make sure that all of you, if you don't have a chance to speak tonight, or you wake up tomorrow morning and you're like, "My goodness, I wish I had said this," we want you to make sure you do that. Get your friends and your family to have their voice as well, to give us your ideas. And I'm just going to tell you what the website is, in case you don't get a card, because we didn't expect this many people here, and we're so excited you're here. So the website is C-O-U-R-B dot C-O slash Rockville. And we hope that you'll go on there. And we have six questions, just to spark some thinking. And quite a few of them are open-ended, so you'll definitely have room to expand upon your thoughts. They're not multiple choice. Okay. C-O-U-R-B dot C-O backslash Rockville.
Is that bees and boy?
Bees and boy, like urban. Courb dot C-O backslash.
Short for co-erb, co-urbanize. So, courb dot co, forward slash Rockville.
Yeah. Backslash, yeah. I grew up in southern Virginia, and I can at times have a little bit of a twang, so bees and bees can go all over the place. So, when I came in today, VisArts had put together these two pages of ideas that Karen Gaskins -- where's Karen? Had worked with her team on, back and front. There is no way, without the benefit of the meeting, that the city of Rockville put together today, that this would come forth. And that's what we're here for. Now, I'm going to tell you that we may not have all of the answers, because real estate and shopping and retail and dining and entertainment, it's all about people, and people tend to be imperfect, especially me. But what I strive to be, and what our team strives to be, is the best community partner that you could have. And Federal Realty is a Rockville company. We're not getting on a plane going back to New York or Chicago. This is our backyard. Our team members work here, they worship here, they shop here, they dine here, they raise their families here, they give birth to their children here. This is important to us. This has meaning for us. So I hope that, and I expect that, based on the people that I see today and the eye contact I'm getting, that at times you're going to be brutally honest, and that's okay, because that's going to spark new ideas. It's going to spark a reaction. And at the same time, I hope that you'll be fair, because our team cares from the heart about this project. And sometimes, it's hard to get feedback, because they do put their lifeblood into the shopping center and into the overall district called Rockville Town Center. So with that, I want to thank you on behalf of me, Federal Realty. We have a team here who works on the project, from leasing to development to marketing, and we wanted to make sure that we had the right ears, the right ears here, to hear everything you have to say. But thank you.
We're going to have questions after the presentations, okay? So bear with us, please. I'm going to introduce you now to Ricky Barker. He is the Director of Community Planning and Development. Ricky, come on up.
My name is Ricky Barker. I'm the Director of Community Planning and Development Services. And one of the reasons, I just started in Rockville on June 25th. And one of the reasons I came here is public engagement. And this is a clear statement that you all care about the city of Rockville, and it's important to you. And we, on the staff, want to do everything we can to serve you and continue to make Rockville great. So, one of the things that, with my over 32 years of experience in planning and development, I want to tell you right now that the downtown is just an amazing place. And I know that there is some concerns about why you're here tonight, but from my perspective, over my career, this place has incredible bones and incredible features that has been successful, and I feel like it can continue to be successful. One of the things that, as you know, it's a mixed-use area, close to transit, and with a lot of investment that's happening in the downtown. And I'll talk about that in a minute. But we have thousands of employees, and it has won award-winning, it's an award-winning design, so it has what it takes to attract a lot of you that live in the downtown. So we want to continue that. Well, it didn't happen overnight, and as the mayor alluded to, the mayors and councils before this mayor and council laid the foundation for success of the downtown. And in the late 1990s, they made a commitment that they felt like developing the heart of Rockville, which is the town center, which you see outlined in red, was the key to a great success here in Rockville. And in 2001, they adopted the Town Center Master Plan, and that laid the foundation for designing the downtown and revitalizing downtown. And with that, they determined that Phase 1, which is the town square in the purple there, would be the first important, critical phase that the town would make investments in. And so, with that, the city partnered with the master developer, as well as Montgomery County, to build the library, and also build a portion of this building. But the city invested in building the streets, the plaza, the sidewalks, the public garages, and a portion of this building. And then the private sector, of course, did the residence and some retail space. It's very much a success story that you see today. And the other thing that the council, in making that investment, they felt like that that would stimulate other investment. And so since Town Square opened, we've had 900 additional new residential units built, and we have over 600 new residential buildings, residential units in the pipeline, which is really great. And of course, we had Choice Hotels, Choose Rockville as its international headquarters, as well as bringing Cambria Suites to the downtown. As Deirdre pointed out, retail is a tough market. It's not just in Rockville, but it's nationwide. As you know, as you get on your phone and order anything from Amazon, it's much easier, it's just really hard to keep retail going. And now what's turned to is a lot of restaurants, and to fill up the space. And so, as you know, restaurants are challenging. I've worked in a restaurant when I was younger, and it is a really hard thing to pull off. But we have had a lot of success in downtown with restaurants that have been here from the start. But we are here today to hear your ideals and your thoughts on what else will continue us to move forward. So I'm really, I've got my ears wide open and want to hear what you think we need to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. Okay, now I'm going to call up Tim Chestnut, the Director of Rec and Parks.
I am going to be really brief. We are intent tonight is to listen to you, not for you to listen to us all night. One of the questions that the city has been asked frequently in the last week or so is, what has the city done to help support the success of Town Square and Town Center? So, speaking just from the Department of Recreation and Parks, I'm going to quickly read over some examples for you. One of the efforts to make the Town Square, Town Center area attractive and welcoming have included building the Town Square Plaza Park, the trees and landscaping, the interactive fountain, and public art. And there's a whole list of public art, so I won't read that to you right now, but if you ask, I'll answer. Efforts to bring people downtown. These have included free use of the plaza at a frit for the ice skating rink, the caps game on the big screen, the Suds &amp; Soles 5K, the Twilight Run Fest 8K, providing permits for events such as Light the Night, the MS Walk, Out of the Darkness Walk, et cetera. We contributed funds to extend the Friday Night Live concert series, contributed funds for the Arts on the Square series, Hometown Holidays, Memorial Day Ceremony and Parade, Rocktoberfest, Yoga in the Square. In the past, we did the concert series before frit took it over. We had deck parties, which were monthly happy hours up on the rooftop. Used to have the Uncorked Wine and Music Festival, Chili Cook-Off and Music Festival, and Out to Lunch Wednesdays. So the city has and continues to invest in trying to attract people to the downtown area. We're open to new suggestions and new ideas, but this is a partial answer to one of the specific questions that we were asked this week. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. I'd like to invite Eric Over from the Police Department to come on up. And I can say something real quick while we're waiting for Eric. I moved here three months ago from Vermont, and I absolutely fell in love with the town and the town center and the town square. Just to see the best of the city and the country together is just a beautiful thing. I saw a lot of young families, I listened to all different kinds of languages, I saw dogs walking in the street, I saw indoor/outdoor dining. This is a piece of heaven, and you probably live in it, but for someone to come here, it is a piece of heaven.
Everybody hear me? A little too loud? Probably be the one and only time people say that they can hear me. My name is Eric Over. I want to thank everybody for being here. Chief Brito couldn't be with us tonight, he had a prior engagement, so he asked that I come and speak on the Police Department's behalf. I'd like to -- try that again. All right. Chief Brito couldn't be here, he asked me to speak on the Police Department's behalf. What I'd like to do is point out, we also have several other representatives from the Police Department. Lieutenant Brian Paul, we have Lieutenant Andy Crawford, and I have also Corporal Lou, who's actually assigned to our Town Center unit here tonight. They all have a vested interest in what you have to say. They want to make sure that what you have to say is taken back, and we can address those issues and adjust accordingly. I can tell you, Town Center is something that's certainly on our mind. It's a unique and challenging situation for us because of the mixed-use residential commercial. You couple that with the parking, the homelessness, and all the smoking issues, we do our best, but we do listen to people. Whenever we get a complaint, we actually take those complaints to heart, and collectively we work in partnership with our Parks and Recs personnel, we work with our legal department to try and come up with solutions on how to address those issues legally. Sometimes they're not favorable, but we work through them, and we try and do our best. I will say this, though. Without you all, we are ineffective. We are your police department, and quite frankly, effective policing and crime fighting is truly a partnership between us and the community we serve. We rely heavily on each and every one of you to be our eyes and ears in a community. And if you see something, say something. We encourage you to call us, because that's what we need. You are our eyes, and effectively, give us what we need to do our jobs. I welcome any of the questions, the comments, and concerns. I look forward to continually working with Federal Realty, our partnerships we have with them, the merchants, and of course, all the other departments in the city. So, thank you, and I appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
So now we are going to open it up to questions. If you want to line up behind this microphone, one at a time. If you hear someone that already gives a suggestion, come up with another suggestion, okay?
Hi, Hatt. Margie, turn around. Margie?
Last name and neighborhood. Oh, yeah. If you can picture your company, last name and residence. Did that assist you?
There we go. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
So my first name is James, last name is Aruca, I live in the Palladium. I've been a resident here for 11 years. I guess an ongoing challenge here in the Palladium is the parking issue. I'm sure that's on a lot of people's minds. There are other town centers, like the Reston Town Center, they did away with the parking, but is there anything that can be done as far as, you know, accommodating more residents and guests from out of town, or not charging? I know Colonial Parking has, they charge 24 hours a day, or after like seven or eight hours, it's like a flat fee, but with exception to Sundays, is there anything that's going to be done to accommodate not only the visitors and residents, you know, and their families, but the business owners as well? Because I know that they charge employees.
Thank you for that. We are writing down people's comments, but we are also looking for solutions. So if you have a solution, we'd really like to hear that, okay? Next, please state your name and where you're from.
Good evening. My name's Leslie Porter. I've lived at 825 Bryce Road for 20 years. I want you to know how sad I am that Dawson's is closing.
[applause] And if you want to sign the email, we'll just get out the answers.
To know that I was making a difference in the environment, and the sustainability, and the humane treatment of animals, and supporting local vendors meant everything to me. I just think that the Rockville Town Center has been a true gem, and I don't know what it's going to take to keep it afloat. Sometimes I think the amount of overhead that businesses have to take on as far as rent, a large amount of space they have to rent, I think that may be hurting them. Because of the, because we see county-wide roads are over capacity, I would urge the city of Rockville to consider more residential development with very intense scrutiny. Parking and road capacity is just a nightmare here in Montgomery County. And I also want to say that, well, I just really think that the city of Rockville is a great place to live, as we see year after year with the surveys. I thank those in charge of making the hard decisions, and I really, really hope we can find a solution to keep the town center alive and get another humane and sustainable, environmentally friendly grocery store here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you answer the question?
Oh, yeah. If everybody can sign the email form in the back of the room, what we're going to do is share all this information with everybody who signs it, and answer the questions that were raised tonight, okay? So make sure you sign that form. Kaya.
Hi, my name is China Caffrey, and I own the Cottage Monet, so that makes me a dining store here. The oldest surviving retailer, and the reason that I'm sticking with it is because I invested in Rockville Town Square, and that was a great plan, but some events don't work. So, though I love the events, if you have running events, which are wonderful, the reason it doesn't help us is because people just run by. It's great, but it doesn't, in terms of like fostering business, that doesn't help us. But it's a wonderful, you know, organizations. We have so many of them, and as everyone knows around here, we give to almost everybody who walks in and asks for a donation from the Cottage Monet. But, given that, if you want to bolster, you have to give people a reason to come. And yes, we're eating, okay? Everybody loves restaurants and stuff like that. But if you want to be a shopping center, you have to have a women's clothing store, or two, or three, children's boutiques, shoe store, bookstore, okay? If you want to have restaurants, rather than make giant ones, you could have an olive bar, a wine tasting bar. You go to New York City, you go to Brooklyn, those restaurants have seven tables in them, one after another, and in between are the tiniest little shops that give quality. So what we need to do is lift up what we expect of Rockville. Not just put any old thing, but come and ask Federal Realty to please put in quality things. And if people don't want to come because it has a reputation of loss, then give them an offer they can't refuse. Give them free rent for a year, and say, "Look, come in here and prove yourself to us. Help us," right? So, that's what I ask of Federal Realty, and also from the Rockville Town, is that one, you have to support the people that are still left here, and you have to shop, and two, is to require that you have a higher standard for your town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Larry Chiamo. I've been a Rockville resident since 1995, and played a role in the redevelopment of Town Center here from 2001 to 2007. I have suggestions, I have two questions. One's a general one, it's for Federal Realty and for the city. And I think this is a question on the minds of a lot of folks, which really kind of underpins potentially what's going on here. This microphone is terrible. The first question is, what are the lease rates for Federal Realty regarding tenants here? And one of the things I care about would be other lease rates of the new development we're seeing right around the initial project. Obviously key to understanding what's going on here. My second question is very specific, and it's about Dawson's. And I too am heartbroken to see it go. My family and I shop there three, four, five times a week, and it's really a part of our lives now, and I know it is for a lot of folks here as well. Anybody that shops there would recognize that those reserved spaces for Dawson's, especially those one service lots, the service parking lots, there's about 30 spaces there right out in the front that are reserved. You're there on a Thursday evening, Friday evening, Saturday afternoon or evening, almost everyone parking in those spaces aren't going inside Dawson's. And it's obvious that the number of cars in these circumstances that are parked there dwarfs the number of customers actually in the store. Well, I had a recent conversation with somebody that knows Dawson's, and they said that repeatedly over the years, they've asked for help with Columbia Parking, who manages the parking, who works for Federal Realty. They've had conversations directly with Federal Realty, and neither has ever done anything to help with that. So my question is, why not? And if we wanted Dawson's to survive, and if Federal Realty wanted them to succeed, why did they ignore such an obvious decision? Thank you.
My name is Chris. I'm the owner of Pandora Seafood House and Bar. I think that's the name, invented by Federal Realty. Let me tell you the whole story. Why I was given to this situation. When I come in, my agent is my friend. I trust him so much, they told me to have a nice area. I like it. So I signed the, you know, stand-up letter of intent. The agent came back to me two weeks later, he said, "Federal Realty wants me to renovation minimum, $1 million without any TI." And I did it. Okay, I made a beautiful restaurant, Pandora Seafood House and Bar. It has been a restaurant, not even one year. Today is the one-year anniversary. Pandora Seafood House and Bar is one year before we opened. It's beautiful. And then, one of my leads coming to, buy us renovation free, when getting to the permit. But my project manager, he delayed 3 months to give me the MVP drawing. I cannot get the permit until I get, I sign the lease at end of January. But I cannot get the MVP drawing until late April. So, and then I have supposed to have two months, 15% off the rent. And then later on, we signed it, they tell me, supposed July and August, I have a 15% off for my rent to help me with building my business. And then he just sent me the note, they withdraw my money full price, $34,000 from my bank account. He said, "Because you are default, you delay your project." I have, so I rushed to open because I paid four months out of our pocket without opening. That was $137,000, our pocket, without any help, no TI. They supposed to say, "Astira, TI give me $47,500." No, they didn't give it to us. And then, later on, in this year, in April, when I find out from my other realtor, send me the note, missile, offer other people, $27 per square foot. The triple net is $11, that means $38 per square foot, including triple net. But what did I get? I got $63 per square foot, including triple net. Mine is a 16%, more than other people. Do you know how big my restaurant? 6,500 square foot. That means 35,000 per month, out of my pocket, every month. Since I know that, I feel dizzy. I talk to the landlord, I start talking to my lawyer. I said, "Let me..." Another horrible thing is that the trustee pool in the letter of intent supposed to include the CMA. But now I find out my lease, and then they send me the bill, trustee pool, every month, $1,200. Now I find out, it's not include the CMA, not include in the lease. I said, "What's going on?" So I talked to my lawyer, my lawyer said, "Let me do the negotiation." At this time, I asked the landlord for help. We really need your help because your sales not even close to 3 million dollars, okay? Not even half of it. Just make it 110 every year, every month, okay? 110, 120,000 per month. And I told them, "Hi, how can we survive? I had to pay my employee, I got the fee, pay $35,000." But my landlord ignoring, ignoring our request. He said, "No, he give anybody rent reviews, but not Pandora Seafood House and Bar." He said, "It's too early." I told them, "We are the biggest bar, I didn't ask any TI, you scared me for 3 months, didn't give me the MVP drawing, crazy man, didn't give me any MVP drawing until, until late April." So I have no choice. I don't have, I told them, I said, "We need, we need to survive." But they cannot. They keep on saying, "Sign the perception order, I can use the court if you don't pay rent." And then I don't pay, and then after I sign the perception order, they know I'm suing my agent. Now they send me the rent reviews. After I sign the, the perception order, I need to be kicked out. So I have no hope. They send me the rent reviews, $11,500. But I have 30-day notice to kick out. I said, "Fuck that, I'm not going." It is scaring me. My highest rent on the center. Another highest rent is the Russian restaurant, since he did the same agents with me. Everyone. And then from then on, in April, I asked everybody, "What is other people's rate? $30 per square foot, Beryl Masroom, $27 per square foot." Only us, $45 plus 17-something triple net, that means it's 16%, more than other people. Now they tell, but that's the magic thing, they invent us. I said, "No, fuck that, they offer me, they offer me $11,500, I don't even take it. I don't want to scare other people coming to this town center." They lie. I don't want them to lie, other people come into the center. So I say, "I leave it." So I leave.
Hello, my name is Fadelle Zimt. I'm the owner of Bon Restaurant. I'm closing, I apologize. I don't know how you can know when you're closing. I cannot make a, I cannot pay rent, so I am leaving.
Hello, my name is David Duffield. I've been a Rockville resident since the day I was born, 23 years ago. I grew up going to Town Center since middle school. My bus rode by it as it was being built, and I was excited about it every day seeing it. Instead of high school, coming here every afternoon. It's really sad to see how many businesses have closed since the Town Center is open. How many, it's even sadder to see how many local businesses have closed, having replaced with big national chains. I'm just really disturbed to see how the only businesses that can survive in Rockville Town Center are Gordon Beer, Shbar Louis, and Buffalo Wild Wings, and Starbucks. And my question I pose to the mayor, and to all those, all those in the city council are, why are there no rent kickbacks, or why are there not enough rent kickbacks for local businesses? I'm sure there are, I'm sure Seven Lock's Brew would love to open something here, I'm sure, or just pick any one. They're always so expensive. I think the rent is definitely at the heart of the problem here. Since Rockville Town Center may be still financially viable, but certainly is not sustainable if businesses keep shuttering up the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, I've been a resident in Rockville for over 10 years. Some of my issues are the high turnover that's been happening for over 10 years, not just currently, of businesses, and the noise day and night for the residents, and lack of signage for events. There's a Oktoberfest or should be events in the Town Center to let people, some kind of signage there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tom Moore. I've lived in Rockville since 1997, grew up in the area. When Town Center was built, there was a serious flaw that kind of started, came from the very beginning. The mayor counseled a lot of very good things in building this area, but they made almost, what might be a fatal flaw, that they cut the height of the buildings in half at the very last minute. And what that's done is deprived all the retail that was planned for this area, the density they needed to make. And that's one of the reasons, I think, why Amazon couldn't, well, too, for the fact that we've had so much turnover in our region, we just haven't had the people here to support. Now, one of the other things that the Town Center was supposed to do is serve as catalysts, and drive investment, you know, north of here, south of here, just around the area. And in that, it's done very well. And we're seeing especially north of here, a couple buildings coming online, other things coming, a lot of activity. We heard earlier that 600 more units are going to be opening here soon. Those will be good customers for the retail. The question is, what can we do to bridge that gap? You know, the people are coming, we have built it, it will come, they are coming, but you know, we are seeing real pain from people who have done us the favor of investing in our city and having their businesses fail. And it is, you know, my family shop says, "Fancys all the time." It is a huge lost community. We have played concerts there, we have meetings there, and it's not just the grocery stores, it's really kind of the heart of Rockville Town Center. So we have these, we have new Rockville residents coming to this area, very close by. What I want to know is, my question is, for free, is what can they do to bridge the gap? That's all we need. We don't need a perfect solution to these things. People are coming, what can we do to bridge the gap?
Thank you.
Hello. I wrote this down, but I cut it in half. My name is John Apia Duffield. I've lived here for about six years, right over on West End, a couple blocks from here. I know one of developers' favorite solutions is to talk cities into draining the city poppers to offer incentives for big out-of-town businesses. I want to think about what we, the people of Rockville, can grow ourselves for the public benefit of Rockville here in the Town Center. Maybe it's just because I was raised in Seattle, but when I heard Dawson's was closing, my mind went to the, my hometown's iconic Pike Place Market. Publicly owned, managed by a public development authority. Think about Rockville's farmer's market, bigger, year-round and indoors, and a facility reclaimed from Federal Realty for public use, and catering to the public good. A place where the people can meet farmers and artisans face-to-face, much like Dawson's has done a very good job of doing. And if you really want to grow our local economy, you could also repurpose part of that space as a kitchen incubator for food business. Allowing Rockville to help stand up local businesses from among Rockville's own, led by people who have estate in this community. Instead of running through the same old motions of luring business here with giveaways, particularly big out-of-town businesses, let's see how we can grow it ourselves, and build something lasting that Rockville will be proud of.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jason Fossey. I'm the producing artistic director of Flying V, which is a Montgomery County based theater and arts institution. I grew up in Rockville, and my parents still live here. I'm down with the Source Strand, but it's all the honest about that, but currently, it's a great bit of the majority of my life. I don't think there's any one solution, and I certainly think this is only a part of it, and it's something that's very personal to me, so I know I'm biased, and I do think it is a suggestive part of a problem solution, which is to suggest an investment in arts and entertainment in this area. On a very radical level, we'd have better lives. No, um, on a very radical level, if you look at how people measure the success of websites, which is sort of a virtual space, one of the things that they're measuring is duration of time spent. When you invest in arts and entertainment, you invest in places that people come to, that become destinations, you increase the amount of time they spend, and you increase their reason to be here for longer. If they're planning to be here for a period of time, it becomes less investment to stay. They're more likely to walk around and shop, if you've already committed to two hours for a show, or two hours for a concert, plus dinner, plus you've already paid the Vegas dinner, or paid for parking, you're now more likely to spend time investing in that area while you're there. You create a destination for people to come to, and I don't have the exact figures, so I'm not going to pretend that I know them, but I do know that every dollar invested into arts and entertainment ends up being distributed multitudes by the community in terms of everything else that gets spent. When I think of my time in Silver Spring, I can think of a street where there's an independent movie theater, a music venue, and a black box theater, all programming within the same office. I think for retail, arts and entertainment, especially because most of it is nonprofit, especially that which is homegrown, needs to be invested in. But when it is invested in, it increases the investment in that area, and it grows. I think that if we're looking for other things to invest in that can be homegrown, the local artists, musicians, entertainers, those companies and organizations that really want to support this community would be a great place to develop space that right now is not affordable for people, to create a hub, and a reason people keep coming here, to then go to those restaurants, go to those shops, and become the first step towards sustainability. It's not everything, but I think it's an important part of it.
Thank you very much. Let's keep our, can we keep our comments down to like two minutes, because we have so many people? Thanks.
I have two questions.
Your name, what's your name?
Liz, I guess I'm over there. What is the connection between Dawson's Market and Dawson's Market Stages, that's in a close to it? And then my other thing is, I can't imagine anything better than Dawson's, except maybe a co-op. And I wonder if everybody could go one time, be a hundred dollars, like all the co-ops were, except for just save Dawson's and make a Dawson's Market or co-op out of there.
Thank you very much.
So I'm from the short, because I was going to say co-op, too. My name's Leah Larson-Raven, I live in Morin Harrison School. So one of the things with the co-op, but the other thing that I, my husband and I moved with our kids to Rockville 20 years ago, and we literally looked at a map, and we looked at walkability, we looked at communities, we looked at diversity, we looked at socioeconomic diversity, we looked at access to public transportation. One of the things that I'm concerned about, as I see stores closing in this town square, is affordability of the stores that are here. And having a universe of stores and retail that is accessible to a wide variety of people, both ages, bringing a toy store back would be great, we really miss the toy store, the shoe store. You know, thinking in terms of planning, so that we're looking at this square positively and saying, "Okay, do you need this, this, and this, so we can appeal to a broad range of people at a broad range of price points, so that everyone is welcome, it feels like they can invest in it?"
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Ethan Guffin. My wife and I moved to East Rockville, we got a house there to celebrate, I guess they opened up the new town square. We really want to spend money in the town square, but our favorite businesses are always closing, so we're not going to spend the money. I want to be quick, I'm a transit activist. I know people tell me there are parking issues that shouldn't be dealt with, that would help, but I believe that more access through other means of transportation, like Metro, for instance, you have a not very usable pedestrian bridge, and if you rebuilt that so it could connect directly up with Metro when you get out of the train, that would be helpful. Bicycle, not a friendly place, 355. What we really need, we need very clear, separate bike paths. I think south of Twinbrook, but all the way from Twinbrook through the Rockville Town Center to Montgomery College to Shady Grove, to make it really bicycle friendly.
Thank you. Hi Connie.
Hello. My name is Connie Palowski. I was planning on speaking tonight, so if I go over, please feel free to stop me. Okay, so first thing I want to say is, I live Rockville. I'm from Rockville, I live here. I opened a business 13 years ago, mine is over there by White Flint. So if you want to talk about rent, we as business owners, we know what we're getting into in whatever location that we're going to open our business, because you know, we talk to lenders, they tell us what our square footage is, and whether or not they lie, or whatever. So, you know, the rent over in White Flint is really high, I knew that going in, I'm still there 13 years later, I've seen a lot of development over in that area. When Whole Foods came in, I go, bear with me here, folks, I do not point, when Whole Foods came in, it just got so busy, they, the problem was parking. They worked really hard with parking, they do charge for parking over there, and so we've lost a lot of restaurants over in that area. I mean, now parking is really easy because there aren't a Rockville Town Center to Montgomery College to Shady Grove to make it really bicycle friendly.
Thank you. Hi Connie.
My name is Connie Pulowski. I was planning on speaking tonight, so if I go over, please feel free to stop me. Okay, so first thing I want to say is I live Rockville. I live in Rockville, and I live here. I opened a business 13 years ago. Mine is over there by White Flint. So if you want to talk about rent, we as business owners, we know what we're getting into in whatever location that we're going to open our business because, you know, we talk to lenders, they tell us what our square footage is, whether or not they lie or whatever. So, you know, the rent over in White Flint is really high. I knew that going in. I'm still there 13 years later. I've seen a lot of development over in that area. When Whole Foods came in, I go, bear with me here folks, I do not point. When Whole Foods came in, it just got so busy. The problem was parking. They worked really hard with parking. They do charge for parking over there, and so we've lost a lot of restaurants over in that area. I mean, now parking is really easy because there aren't no restaurants to go to. Five years ago, I decided to move to Rockville Town Square. I live at the Americana. I love the Americana. I love walking over here. Now, my question to you is, I'm very active in the Rockville community. I'm active in the Chamber, I'm active in the Rotary. Please see me if you'd like to join me in this group. But one of the things that is always talked about is parking. Now, I've been asking a lot of questions, so I have learned, we can't have free parking because of the Rockville Metro. If our garages were free, then all the metro riders would park here, still take up our parking, and then use the Metro. So my, okay, so here's my question that I want to ask. Who owns garage A, B, and C? Thank you for validating the first two hours, but my question to you is, does Fritt own it, or does the city own it? Does the council own it? Who owns it? The city of Silver Spring, their garages are free in the evenings after business hours and on the weekends. So that was my question, and again, I still live Rockville.
Thank you Connie. Make sure, just remember to put your email on the sheet back there because we will be sending the answers and questions out, and it's only, the email list will not be shared with anyone, it's just for this meeting, okay? Okay, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me? I came all the way from the back, I was saying, speak up. Hi, and I was planning to speak. My name is Marina. I live by the water. That's how it goes, by the water tower. I'm an immigrant, and I came to this country in 97, and I fall in love with Rockville, and now I'm a full resident of Rockville. I'm really proud of it. And one of the things kind of resonating with me throughout this entire evening is the end, my love for Rockville, is the spirit of Rockville, and the fact that we're here and talking about it, I also really appreciate this opportunity from the leadership of Rockville to give this opportunity to speak up, and I feel like it's an opportunity to connect and feel like our energy, because I feel Rockville is really unique space, and we talk about things like Dawson, the dreams that, you know, that think about, that think for us, what is sustainable produce, what is, yes, it was not perfect, I would like, I would be, I'm a yoga teacher, I also work at FCA, but, so I can see how some things can be tuned, so I'm just saying, this is an opportunity for business owners and for the leadership to think, and took out of it, it's really the passion of city, of people, of Rockville, to create a unique environment, and sort this out. I don't know what other, like, we are willing to participate like this, we are willing to pay, like, that was a great idea, $100 membership, restore the market, make things happen, I'm just saying, we're here, we appreciate this opportunity to speak up and to talk. And talking about accessibility, when I moved here and I first saw Rockville, I'm just like, I saw this amazing, like, old houses, they're so cute, and then it's like, so close to see some Rockville. Make it buy it accessible, draw people in, make it like so they can go and arrive here. I'm just, I'm just saying, make it happen.
Okay, thank you so much.
Hi, my name, my name is Monica Sapos, and I just wanted to say that Montgomery College is in Rockville, is a campus of about 14,000 students, and I believe I read some estimates put out a few years ago that very, very few of them ever come to Town Center. Now, the drive from Montgomery College to Town Center is about three minutes, but the walk is substantially longer, and the ride on buses come very frequently, and they take substantially longer to drive. I think I looked it up, and it said 10 minutes, but that's best case scenario. I wonder what the feasibility is of getting a shuttle from Montgomery College.
Thank you, great suggestion.
This store contributes so much to the choice to live in Town Center and the choice to stay in Town Center. It's a place where we, you know, shine one and two-year leases, but no grocery store. I remember waiting five years until Dawson opened. Five years was a really long time, and now we've got this Class A lovely little community-based neighborhood grocery store, and we're going to just let it slip away. I really want the city, the city council, and the mayor to step in and negotiate and find a way to let this little jewel remain with us. I think it's a long time for Dawson's, and I think we should really fight for it.
Thank you. Thank you. We're down to one minute, okay? One minute now.
My name is David. I'm in the Americana Town Center, which is a walk distance to here. I'm kind of in a unique position, that I'm a restaurateur as well as a frequent customer of the Town Center, and I've looked at it from different angles, saying, okay, you've got a place that is upscale and looks great, but you've got places like Pike and Rose, and, you know, downtown Crown that Federal Realty kind of ran into to develop, and it kind of led the Town Center to the, you know, I understand the rent for a little bit lower, but, but part of the problem is that, you know, you're kind of out of sight, out of mind when you drive by, you do not see the Town Center, and people forget about it. You know, I've, I've thought about coming into the Town Center and opening a restaurant here, but, you know, I think parking is an issue, and to elaborate on what you said, I understand, you know, as far as people going down to the DC, using the metro and taking the day to, you know, fill up spots, I understand the concern, but two hours is just not enough time if you want to relax, walk around, you're thinking about your parking. I'd say four, five hours every day is not enough time for someone to go down to work and then, you know, make their way back. It's, it's, four or five hours should suffice, I think. And I think that's one of the things that's killing this Town Center. And, you know, I guess as far as the, am I off?
Not yet, not yet.
And there was something else that I'm forgetting, but I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Greenspun. I live at 120 Gibbs Street. I've been there since August last year, but I had a contract to buy in the Palladium originally 12 years ago, and I was misled by Federal Realty. I'm thinking of that lady who just opened that restaurant. I feel she was misled. Federal Realty is not as nice as you think. They said there was balconies. I had videos with balconies. I gave $40,000 for a deposit, and it was going up, there was no rebar sticking out of it. And I'm thinking, there weren't, and then I had to fight them to get my deposit back, and eventually, only because I prosecuted white collar fraud cases, and the veteran too, I went after them, and I got my money back. And I think, you know, we had misleading videos, and I think, I feel really sorry for this lady that opened this restaurant. What's her name? That door, this is Julie and I, my fiance. We're walking by, yeah, yeah, walking by, we're saying, my God, it's beautiful, what, and then we saw the prices, and we were saying, did the buyer do their research? Because remember when we had the Greystone Grill across the street? The prices were too high. They went out of business. So I think that the city owes a duty in some way to have an ombudsman or a consultant, because this lady was shafted by her broker, and it sounds like Federal Realty too, to consult with them, to find out what the rates are, to find out what the history has been. It's clear that she was innocent here, and I think that's wrong. So the city needs somebody to help these people. That is just one way.
Thank you, thank you.
And I think she's got a good suit against her, her broker, all right?
Thank you.
The other thing is, the other thing is, the parking has always been a problem here. Why don't you make it easier for the people, instead of having to go validate and this and that, just to make sure that they shop, people say, I don't want to go through that. Give them the first two hours free, they can do that with the ticket, and then after that, they can pay. You don't want to make it harder for people, they'll just go by, and you have to let, and as far as Dawson's goes, this is my final remarks, okay? I try to support Dawson's as much as possible, but I'm not enlightened as the modern generation. I'll eat most anything. And in fact, I won't eat anything without chemicals. And I was born when FDR was president, I'm still here, and I'm still playing hard. And some people still act crazy.
Thank you.
So I'm in favor of any kind of supermarket, you know, convenience store, you can get in there, and if they have health foods, God bless you, and I'll eat most anything of what they got. Thank you.
Okay, one minute please, we have a whole line, one minute.
Hello, can you hear me? Thank you. My name's Joanna Kim, and I actually own a little clothing boutique, Liquid Blue, in this way. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, and I was doing stocktaking, so please don't judge me by what I'm wearing now. And along with Chaya, a cottage man, we're probably some of the last, well, now Dawson's in, last small independent retailers left in the square. Now, I'm not going to give Federal Realty a hard time. I'm also in education, so I'm, I'm aware of the reality of retail. I'm just going to say that my lease will end soon, and whether you support my particular type of business or not, I will tell you that I can no longer afford to do business in either Montgomery County or the state of Maryland. And prior to the fashion industry, I worked in the specialty food industry, and I'm telling you, Rockville, that my heart breaks for you, and I live in Howard County, not Montgomery, so when I go, I won't be, I won't be affected by this, but I'm telling you, Rockville, you are, you are losing the heart of your city. Please do not make the mistake of letting all of your small independent businesses go the way because of online. And I really, I would be very sorry to go, and I hope that you can find new retailers because it's important for the economy that you actually buy things, as well as eat things or pay things. I hope that you find new retailers that will fit with your mix, and I hope that Federal Realty listens to all of the things that you say today, and it's a tragedy that you're losing your sense of responsibility.
Hi, my name is Laura Anzlo, and I've lived in the Palladium for about three years, and I love Rockville. I actually was planning to speak tonight, but everyone else had so many amazing ideas, and I'm left with two. So one of them's kind of a small one, but I think it would be really impactful, I think it would be great if Rockville Town Square had a dog park nearby, and I actually, and I actually have an idea where one could go, right across from the Starbucks Colonial Parking owns a monthly lot that no one parks in. No one parks it. I think one part of there, it's a great space for a dog park, you can fence it all, people can bring their dogs there, it will bring people into the square, maybe they'll walk around. There's so many restaurants where you can sit outside with your dogs and grab a drink or grab a cup of coffee. The other thing is, I used to be a figure skater, so no one loves an ice rink more than me, but I actually think the one we've got outside is up a little bit too long. Yeah, we're building it now, and it's going to be 84 degrees tomorrow, and it melted last year, so I think that if they could shorten it to, you know, maybe mid-November to the end of January, that would be more easy for your festivals, your events, and then people could bring their kids and their families and still spend time in the square when it's beautiful fall weather, and they don't have to sit outside at Tide Pavilion listening to construction. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
On South Adams Street, I moved here from DC about seven years ago, when my boys were little, I moved here for the schools. A lot of people love Rockville. I love Rockville, I love it, and we moved here for the schools. There's a lot of families here, right? I feel like Town Square has let down all the families who come here to the choice. We don't have that anymore. We don't have the haircutters anymore. We don't, I, there's so much emphasis on high-end restaurant, I mean, drinks, and that's great, I love to do that too, but I can't afford to do that. I'm a family, I have family, I'm not going to be able to spend a lot of money on drinks and really high-end retail. You need reasonable retail and serves the diversity of this community that we have. Families, people on fixed income, we're going to have the retirement community open up. They're not going to have a ton of money to spend, but it would be nice if they could spend some money in Town Square. So I really want people to love this, the Federal Realty, welcome to different businesses and offer diverse options.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Charles Schuler, and I've lived in Rockville for about 37 years now, so obviously I love Rockville. And I just wanted to sort of build on one of the earlier comments that the government had mentioned, the idea of a shuttle bus coming from Montgomery College. And I've also spent a lot of time in downtown Bethesda, and of course downtown Bethesda has this nice free circulator bus, which kind of moves you around through the town, and you just hop on and hop off. And I think that, you know, I get it, it's about business in this area, and it's also that this is a public-private partnership between the city and Federal Realty and all the people in this room, so it is, we all have to do this together. But the idea of getting people into the businesses to spend money, and I think, yeah, parking's a problem, I'm not sure everybody can ride bikes here, but why not invest in some shuttle bus service that get people to move around the city and bring them into the businesses? They got to, they got to get you to spend money.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michaela Fielder. I live just off of West Montgomery, and I'm the friend riding the bike with the four kids. I do ride my bike. We have a household of seven people. We have one jar. Most days, we don't use it. I don't see a lot of bikes around. I wish I saw more. I wish that we did have safer places to ride bikes, especially with kids. And I just want to say for all the people that are so sad to see Dawson's go, I'm not really interested in government solutions. I'm asking people, were you shopping there for your groceries, or just picking up a chapstick or essential oil, or were you actually buying your groceries there because I was? And I intended to do that because I care about Dawson's and I care about businesses like Dawson's, and I know I'm spending more than if I was going to be shopping at Giant. I choose not to support grocery stores that use distributors and middlemen and don't pay the money to the farmer, to the small company, and now they're leaving, and I'm sorry, but I really don't care about anyone else in the Town Square except for Dawson's. All these big chains, I don't shop there. I care about Dawson's. That's the thing that I'm.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andy DeWiler. I've lived in Rockville since I think like '09. I have a company here, I'm in real estate. My, my suggestion is somewhat abstract, I guess. I would suggest like a different approach to problem solving, because one of the things that really struck me when we first started taking the, the comments this evening, is that we were going to take, we were ready for everybody's suggestions, right? But what problem are we solving? Like, suggestions for what? And like, I guess I would offer that we don't have the answers to that, right? So like, what I would have expected at the beginning of the meeting is, we've had 20 bit.
But to solve a problem, you have to start at the top. You have to solve the underlying problem, no, overall problem first.
No, overall problem first, big problem. I've gotten to know a lot of the business owners in the square, past and present, I call a lot of them my friends. They have all told me that they do not feel supported by Federal Realty. I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you on blast, I'm not putting you on blast, you are, I'm just giving you a suggestion. From the rent increases astronomically, to being involved in events, being shut out from events, and then there are normal customers that would come because of the parking, they lose business there. If you're gonna create, continue to create a community, a neighborhood, the business that is involved and responsible for bringing the businesses to the streets have to give the feeling that they are caring for the business. Don't just check in to get the bill, to send the bill, to collect the money. Check in to show that you care. How are you doing? How's the business doing? Was it a good month? Reach out to show that you care, create that neighborhood, that community from the top, it will trickle down to the bottom.
Thank you!
Thank you.
My name is Douglas Aguirre-Cheol, stay a little, one minute, I'm a local resident too. I have two questions regarding the parking, and maybe I'm the only one in the room who doesn't understand this. First of all, if the problem has been the parking for so long, why has nothing changed with the parking? It's been the same rules.
They need not!
Something tweaked, or added, or something, to my knowledge, nothing has changed in 10 years. Second question, again, maybe I'm the only one who doesn't know this. Does the city get the money from the parking and use it to pay off the bond issue that they used to build the garages? Or does Federal Realty get some of the money, and if they did, why couldn't they increase, not decrease, increase the amount of money that they charge us for parking, which we would pay in return for them decreasing the rents on the businesses, so that they would stay? If Federal Realty doesn't get any of the money, then that obviously doesn't work. So, who gets the money that is currently collected?
The parking garage. Cut me out right there.
Thank you for your comment.
I have to take this off, because I'm too short to reach the microphone. My name's Rhonda Popkin, and so I grew up in the Glenmont area of Silver Spring, but I graduated from a church in Montgomery, and my son is a fourth generation native of Rockville. Grandfather and great uncle built homes themselves on Beale and Anderson. My husband and his brother, who's in this room, but I won't embarrass him, grew up on South Island Street. We lived outside of Maryland for many years, and we lived in your city for six years. And when we were moving back here, I said, "If we're gonna move back to Montgomery County, we cannot move somewhere, we have to get a car to wherever, okay?" And it was like, "Rockville." So I moved here, we lived in College Square, condominiums over behind the post office for several years, and we just left home and didn't do more comments. We are very invested in this community, and I think one of the things that's come up over and over in relation to Dawson's closing, is that it has been a community hub. Yes, it is incredibly ethical grocery store, and I was a co-op member, and I have been a CSA member forever, and I love organic food, but beyond that, it is a place that has brought people to the community. And it serves as a community hub, and it draws people to the other businesses, so it's more than just a grocery store. And what we really need is a community hub like that. And I do think it's incumbent on the city to also interact with Federal Realty, because it's very clear from hearing from people, that there have been problems in terms of responsiveness and communication. If we want to invest in Rockville and keep Rockville thriving, then people from the city need to get involved in making sure that we maintain these kinds of community hubs, so that can-
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hi, everyone, I'm Stacy Caplow, it's Cohen, I think we bought our house from Doug, who spoke a few people before me. Four years ago, he moved here from Austin. I am a parent at Bell Elementary, I live less than a mile from Town Center, and I'm gonna tell you all what I want to spend my money on in Town Center. I want to be able to walk to Town Center, and I want to be able to have a beer with my friends, I want to be able to bring my kids up to do more than just get a book out of the library, get a drink from a chain restaurant, and go to a movie. I want there to be more activities, I want there to be a cool bookstore that you can see college students sitting at, that you can see an improv group performing on a stage on a Tuesday night. I want reasons to come up there that are beyond just these chain anchors. Which I get, I'm in real estate, I get, we need to be able to pay the bills, I get that chain restaurants are doing well, but we want a little bit more local flavor, and so we want to figure out how to do that. And so, maybe, you know, on neighborhood lists or if we're trying to get brainstormings going, and there's a lot of like, "Well, that'll never work, and that'll never work," and we're talking about these co-op ideas, and that's all great. I want to be on a committee that helps with this decision-making, that meets with Federal, and meets with the city, and reports back to the community and say, "All right, guys, here we go, here we go, okay? Because we're not gonna solve that problem, and Town Center's not gonna be everything to everyone, but I'm sorry, I couldn't afford taking my family out to dinner at Pandora, I never even got to try a restaurant, although it was beautiful, I was so excited when it was coming in. I'm not excited about a mobile firestone, because that's not a reason that's gonna bring me here." I think Federal wants the same things that the city wants, that we want, an active Town Center that no matter what your age, your color, your race, or whatever, you can go to Town Center and find something to do to hang out and enjoy, and you feel like you can afford it, and you can access it.
My car is in the back, I have a commitment for you to be on.
Hi, I'm Kathy Smalley, I'm also a parent at Bell, and I wanted to give kudos to the Town Center and City of Rockville for Oktoberfest this year was 100%, we proved it from last year. After those new, and it was exciting, but this was a good job, and I think they did a great job. On Sunday, I went down to Pike and Rose to check out theirs, it wasn't lacking, but I noticed, it's in their parking garage, when you come in, there were doors to all the streets, oh no, all the stores that are on the street, the outstreak, Old Georgetown Road, you could get to them from the garage, there's a door for each of the restaurants, each of the shops, from the garage, instead of having to park in the garage, walk all the way around. CVS is a nightmare to get to, if it rains, I never come to the CVS anymore, because you have to walk all the way around. And I'm not being lazy, it's just, there's certain times you need to get in and out. So, having backdoors to all these outskirts stores, cozy clothes here, I don't know how a sandwich shop in a Town Center could close, who, the noodle company, but if they had access from the garage to those spots in an easier location, I think that would be a big, big help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, folks, my name is Iga, and I came here to talk on behalf of my father. His name is Saladjon, and he owns the Russian restaurant, which is near Cozy. So, like, the kid step from Pandora, she had issues at the beginning, so we had the same thing. We had the same problem with the broker, because we used the same broker, even though we did not have each other. And then, there was a property manager, I guess, her name was Allison Murphy. She did not give us a key, until I did not call Jen Davidson, and I called Joe Burns, and I was crying there, and asking and begging them, "We gave the deposit, we signed all the contract." And please, we need to start. My architect was coming twice and charging me over times, because we were staying next to the door and asking them to open the door, because they was having the passcode that we never can open the door. And she always was giving us an excuse that she's out of town, she's not here, she does not endorse the drawings. So, we have all these issues, but my father is old-school Russian now, he doesn't want to create any problems. He thought he gonna come here, and he gonna be successful, since he did, all his life, he been in the restaurant business. We opened a big restaurant in New York, in Queens. It was for 1,000 people, it was 500 upstairs and 500 downstairs. We had the restaurant in Portland, Oregon, it's called Kalinka Russian LLC Company. It was successful, it was so great. But I moved here, and I asked him to come here with me, and he went to Denver, he, we, all my childhood, they had the restaurants. We been in Denver, Colorado, we had the Russian Palace downtown. It was for 800 people restaurant. So, my dad had a lot of experience back home, he owned the, I can tell, like, Rockville Town Center places, my dad owned that place, and all of them was entertainment and restaurant places. And he was the main executive chef, so he knows what he's doing, and he, when we came here, we checked the menu. Our prices are so low, but he uses high quality, everything is very expensive. He never uses like, low-quality stuff, and he would order all the time from Pro Food, Cisco, and local, our distributors. And the prices for the beef loin kebab, the organic one, it's cost only $14, it's a big portion of it. It's, we don't cover small pieces, even if it's bigger than like a Moby Dick. But we cannot survive here because of the so many issues we had before, that we paid the rent, almost a year was paying the rent, until it was renovating, because of, again, Allison Murphy. She was telling me, and my dad, because my dad understands everything in English, but he has like, issues to speak English well, and I was translating for him. She was asking me to get the wallpapers, we already ordered the wallpapers, but she was not giving me approval, unless it's not gonna be fire-rated. Fine, we returned them, we got the fire-rated, and it just cost us, one roll cost us $600. Then, she asked us to do the, we ordered the curtains, and I asked for permission for the curtains. She said, "Everything is fine, she likes the design, and everything was cool." But at the end, she said, "I forgot to mention you, it's have to be fire-rated." We lost a game, because the Rockville interior, the owner is Thomas, he's from Hungary, and he knows us. And he said that, "Guys, this doesn't work like this, you guys have to tell us everything I had, because we ordered it, so now we have to pay back." So, that's why I want to tell, like, I know, I was calling Jen, I was calling Joe Burns that time, and I was crying like hell, and I was asking, because I was receiving, my dad was receiving the letters that they're gonna await us, and I was crying and telling that, it was first time in our life, and I said, "Jen, please help me, I don't know what to do." And yes, I'm gonna tell you, Jen Davidson helped me a lot. She was pocketing, and she came up to me, and she said that, "Don't worry, everything gonna be all right." But right now, like, everybody said, the parking, parking's a hell issue. Nobody wants to come here because of the parking, and we asked them many, many times, even the mayor was there, all these owners of the restaurant, all owners, they, we did a lot of meetings with the mayor, and we asked them to help us, to do something. The Federal came, and we was asking them and begging them, "Please, help, let's do this, we all have a validation system. How about if you guys gonna do that, the restaurants that we in, if we're gonna, you're gonna put us four-hour or five-hour validation?" So people came in, and we tell them like, "You guys ate, and here's the five-hour validation." Of course, people gonna come, but when, they're gonna come on Friday, and they have only two-hour parking validation. They're gonna sit down, until they're gonna have a drink, until they're gonna wait for the, somebody will come, or the friends, or the family members, it's gonna pass like 40 minutes, and then appetizers gonna come. And then again, they're gonna chat, or what, they have to just eat, 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 and go? My restaurant and my father's restaurant, we put everything on it, we put 1.2 million, we went from the scratch. It's beautiful restaurant, it's very nice restaurant, and they have so many entertainments there.
Thank you.
Live music, jazz, everything, so we can do something, so people will come and enjoy it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Team Rockville. So, I have been a Rockville resident for the past two years, four months, 22 days, three hours, two minutes. And I love every minute of it. We moved from DC, my family and I have become a sponsor with the neighborhood that we're in, shout out to Team Maryville. The concern that I have was that when we left DC, and I was kicking and screaming, we decided on Rockville because my husband didn't want to be in the city anymore. However, I said, "Rockville's cute, there's a lot of cute things happening here, the Town Center's cute, it's cute, so let's move here, I was attracted to the city." To me, and while I recognize that Dawson's is a big loss, and I didn't shop there, honestly, my concern is that the void makes it unattractive and not cute. And so, with people that are moving from DC, because people are apt to do that when you look at the prices in DC, they don't want to move here, because they see those voids as not being viable. And so my question, solution, rather.
Good.
Is to ask the city to do what it did for, do you remember Kids Museum? Rockville and Montgomery County did a partnership, and they solicited, Kids Museum, and said, "Hey, we'll give you this if you come here, so that we can make it exciting for the children of Rockville." I just want to say, Rockville is amazing. And so, if we could do that with restaurants that were in DC, because it's a lot of DC chains, right? And so while it's not necessarily Rockville local, it's still local to our area. So we have things like Compass Coffee, right, it's just a coffee shop, but it's a great coffee shop. There's a few branches changed in DC, bring it to Rockville. We can go out and ask these places, small places, that someone's points, and have these big Buffalo Wild Wings, which, you know, sometimes the wings are delicious, but at the end of the day, the small, modern pop New York feel is what makes the community a community. And so if we could go to those specific restaurants and say, "Hey, we're interested in you, we'd really like to see you at Rockville," and then do the same thing we did with the museum, maybe we could, if, Rockville's a good idea.
Thank you.
Ryan Dalton, I live on the other side of 270. By a round of applause, how many folks live, Lenora, Rockshar, Paulsby? How many of you are by chance from the Walter Johnson High School cluster? How many of you by chance are from the Wooton Cluster? How many of you by chance are from the Gay Cooper Cluster? How many of you by chance are from Rockville High School Cluster? All of those clusters and the other side of 270 should be over here, supporting your issue and your problem, and that is not occurring. My side of 270, that side, is disenfranchised from this side of 270. And we need to be here to support your community. Whatever solution comes, yeah, thank you, whatever solution comes forward, needs to be a solution that one city is able to move forward together. Where I'm not at a mean where I say, there's rich, a large, how many of you are on the Rich Montgomery Cluster? I think you're getting your numbers and your math, and I think my point to you is that we all have got to get into this together. One of the really strong suggestions I will make to this group is, we have a body of government that has five elected officials. A lot of this is from the center of Town Center. That's not really getting the Walter Johnson, the Gatorsburg, the Rockville, the Wooton, the other side of 270, invested in the city. I was really suggesting, maybe we think about thinking this year, in addition to the problem solving, just the shuttle bus getting us over here is a great idea, but I also strongly urge you, please find a way to bring us over here, so we can be part of the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sandy Franklin, I've been a long time Rockville resident. I wanted to make a point, there's, somebody was talking about the event at Town Center. You might have noticed, now I don't remember when it started, but in the Washington Post newspaper, the Montgomery Weekly, they have cut out the "What's Doing" section. And I, and other people, we don't know anymore when things are going on at Rockville. We don't know when there's a sale at the library or any events, and I wish they could bring that back, that's very important. But with Dawson's, well, I'm sorry to see them go, but honestly, my organic market is a similar store, their prices were better, what do you expect? I mean, I'm sorry, you know, I don't want that to happen to anybody, but we have to, this is a middle-class neighborhood, and we can't keep on having stores with upper-class prices.
Thank you.
How you doing? Brian Hayes, I say, at Fenestra, Mark. My question really is, I apologize, I'm kind of ignorant of this whole Town Hall thing. I thought it was gonna be a conversation where we give questions, and we have officials here that might be able to answer something, because I've been up since 3:30, and I feel like at 9 o'clock, nothing's gonna be accomplished, so-
No, we're going to send you an email with-
There's a lot of people who email, may not be written correctly. I mean, we have a lot of questions that are being raised here, a lot of suggestions, and I thought the purpose of officials being here was to interject and have a conversation, because I'm sure some of the issues that were raised were raised last year, the year before that, and so, that's what I'm saying.
Do you want to say that, or you want me to?
Why don't we meet again in two weeks? Why don't we all meet again in two weeks and have some answers?
You wait the email, man.
My name's Gloria Poole, and I must tell you that I've been around Rockville over 70 years. that I've been around Rockville over 70 years. If there's anybody here that loves Rockville more than me, I'd like to meet you. My thoughts to the city and whoever here tonight, please save the city the best way you can. My family owned a florist in Rockville, Jean's Florist. We went through a renewal, and we went through the Town Center. So I've lived through it. These people nowadays that have businesses, they need your help. Please help them. I've got a good spirit, and I wanted to be last, but I'm not. But please help these people. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Judy. I've lived in the stadium for 11 and a half years. I've never seen so many stores closing all at once. There are usually stores that would close, and then a new one would pop in, which was great. Because it's always, you know, nice to have something new coming in. So, okay, so what's happening? I want to know. So many stores are closing. That's one question. The other thing is that the restaurants that are closing, most of them, well, the ones that succeed here, obviously, we know who they are, Gordon Biers and the Tapprum, they're all moderately priced Buffalo Wild Wings. But the restaurants that come in here, they're too expensive, inappropriate for the people that live here, I think. And I think that we need to look at something like a diner. Would be great with Melo Mushroom. Like a Silverdiner type restaurant. Something like, if you're looking for individuals, like the Greens that make salads, that you, just a small restaurant. Like chops, like chops, right. Or a bakery store, or a bakery. Or a bakery. I think you have to go out and find out. Proper stores would be, proper stores would be in here. And as far as parking, yeah, you could extend it. But people come here. Your events are fantastic. People come from everywhere. Silver Spring, everywhere. I talk to them. It's like amazing to me. And except for movies, that was great. But you don't have that anymore. But the events are good. People pay for parking when they come to these events. They're packed in here, so I don't know. I mean, why is that? So maybe it's not just, maybe extend the parking on to the weekends and then, you know, extra hours. But I think people will pay if you give them something, you know, that's worthwhile.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeffers Fromm. I live on South Van Buren Street. I've lived in Rockville for over 10 years. I worked for the City of Rockville during the time that we were building the Town Center in the Communications Department. And my question is about marketing, and how is Fred marketing the Town Square? And how is the city continuing to market Rockville Town Center overall? When we were building the Town Square with Fred, we would always have articles of Rockville reports and a lot of information online. And so, you know, there's a lot of new ways even now to market. And so we'd love to know more about how the city and Fred is doing that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Jordan. I live in New Mark Palms, and I've lived in Rockville since, I guess, 1985. It's six, so I've been in quite some time. I guess my question is, has anyone from Fred or from the city ever really sat down with a business that was folded, gotten out of the Town Center, tried to find out why? Was it business? Was it a bad business model? Was it not a good fit? And if they haven't, I think starting with Dawson's would be a good start. Rick Hood is a successful business guy. He's had a store in Richmond for years. I don't know, Rick didn't do a good job managing this store. There was always turnover in this store. Maybe the prices were too high. But I think it's time that somebody sits down with Rick and find out, was it his business model? Was it Brent? Was it pricing? And come up with some information and some answers and send somebody to walk down the door.
Thank you. You had someone in line. Oh, oh, okay. Go ahead, sorry. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jan Balkman. I'm in front. Let's get everybody. I'd just like to say, I didn't plan on talking tonight, but, you know, I've also noticed I've lived in 13 years. I live five blocks away. I lament that Dawson's closing. They actually carried my book and also my cards. I lament, so. What strikes me is, it just feels really depressing to walk around Town Center, but it was five years ago, there was a big slump. And I just, this is the first time I've actually heard the disgruntled complaints about federal. Sorry, I know it's not you personally. But it's just clear here, I've been a counselor, and I, there needs to be more communication. It seems like there's a real lapse in communication between perhaps the city and federal royalty, or definitely on what we've heard this evening. But you obviously don't know all details. Between the quality of your staff, or how enthusiastic are you? You know, who do you want here? And even the fact that you live here, but really, you know, I agree with all the other people who said, "Small or unique things." Bethesda's Bethesda's, or a Great Sea, or a competition with Crown now. So what can you, you know, who can you get in here so it's a little bit different, so that people want to come here? That's all it is. I'm also proud.
Thank you. If you have suggestions of who you think would fit in with who's here, we welcome that.
What's feasible and what's viable, you know?
I came up before that question about marketing was posed. And since I'm up here, I definitely want to second that.
Do your name.
I'm Chevy, and I'm actually one of the owners of Mark's Studio that's on 355. We're a corporate branding and strategic marketing company.
Use your mic. Use your mic. Use your mic.
We've heard a lot about federal royalty. And by the way, I'm also the Rockville Chamber, Margie's Chair for the Marketing Committee. So with that said, we've heard a lot about federal royalty, about the Rockville City and what their roles are. But more importantly, I think it's really important, and there was a question posed earlier about, you know, getting together with those tenants that have left. So, you know, focus groups is a big component of marketing. You know, understanding what the target demographic is looking for, the consumer, so forth and so on. So that's, I definitely want to make sure that we understand who's doing that and who's responsible for it and what those campaigns are to attract people to the square. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betty. And I'm in DC, here in Montgomery, native. I just moved back to the area this spring from the other city, working in Manhattan, living in Brooklyn. And my boyfriend actually used Dawson's to learn me here. So I'm a producer for HBO, and I've been working from home since spring remotely for them. And, you know, I go to Dawson's, like, pretty often during the weekdays for my coffee and everything, stopping for lunch. But it's deserted during the meat days. Dawson's and most of the business here, our businesses here are just ghost towns. So it just, there's, it doesn't have the foot traffic it needs. Like, nobody has the foot traffic to sustain their businesses here.